And so I will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, June 23rd. If everyone would stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let the record show that we have Jeff Hires, Tammy West, Ryan Osmus, and Lisa Killian here in person. Tracy Rankin is joining by phone. And Jamie will be here. She's just running late. We are needing an adoption of the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report. First off, I have a couple changes. The agenda says there's no special presentations, but we will have a short presentation after we approve the agenda or adopt the agenda. Under Human Resources, we're going to remove items two and three from this board meeting and look at those at future board meetings. And then on the executive sessions, we are going to flip-flop those. So the item number 13 will become number 11, and 11 will be number 13.
I make a motion to approval.
I'm second.
Right, we've got a motion by Tammy and a second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that is five zero. Okay, for our special presentation, Dr. Dirksen, we are very on...
Very much special.
Yeah, it's you. It's you. So rumor has it that this is your last board meeting. We would like to thank you for your eight years of leading this district. You've done a great job, and we are very glad that you said yes to us. And so if you would join the board members that are here up front, we have a little something for you.
I will. No, that's special presentation. I was a little confused at first, so thank you. Thank you.
That's for you.
Okay.
There you go, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
That's right.
Let the festivities begin.
Yeah.
There you go.
A little something to help you enjoy retirement a little bit.
Thank you very much.
We're very thankful for you.
Six months with a wheelchair rental. Not yet, not yet.
Yet. All right, we are ready now for recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The president shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. If you'd like to come before the board, we'd ask you to approach the podium at this time. Okay, seeing nobody jump up, we will move ahead. Next up, we have the consent agenda, which includes the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, approval of minutes for the June 9th, 2025 Board of Education meeting, approval of character strong renewal and expansion, approval of M HIT K Dad's Mental Health Intervention Team Grant Year Three, approval of 2025-2026 Administrative Policy and Procedure, Classified Employee Substitute Para-Professional CDC DLT Leader Mentor Handbooks, approval of Skyward renewal, approval of three-year renewal of Go Guardian, approval of Edge Annuity renewal, approval of various donations to Dodge City High School with the attached list of donors, and the approval of Head Start, Early Head Start Grant. Any questions on any of those items?
I'd make a motion. We accept the consent agenda.
One second. We've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that would be five zero. All right, we're ready now for new business. First off is the approval of the QM Latif transition plan. Who's going to do that? Looks like Victor's going to jump up here.
I'm glad you had to pronounce that.
I just made a guess. I'm sure he'll correct me.
Good evening. Yes, it's Cumative. So really, really close.
That makes sense.
Perfectly close. Yeah, so this is actually a new software that Skyward is going to be transitioning to. We've been working with Skyward. They notified us about a year and a half ago that they're going to be moving to this new platform, Cumative. It's not Skyward 3.0. It is a completely different platform. And what that means is that we literally have to move everything out of our current program and then transition it into the new program. That means like custom reports, anything that we've personalized within Skyward won't import into the new software. And so actually what we've done is because we knew that we were going to have to basically move to a new platform, we took the last couple of years to look at other platforms to see how they compared to Cumative to make sure that this is what we, what direction we really wanted to go. And then, and through that, we realized that Cumative or Skyward really does everything that we want it to do, and Cumative will expand on that. So not only are the custom reports that we currently have, they're going to be able to customize even, even more at a user level. And so because of that, we feel like that it's time to really move into that new platform. They already have a plan on moving all of the Kansas, all of the districts in Kansas. I think their goal is to move everybody by 2030, if I remember correctly. We didn't want to be the first, but we also didn't want to be the last in that. And so what we did was we stayed in touch with Hayes, who's been, I think, I don't want to say Guinea-pick, but that's kind of what they've been. They've been the first school district to really fully transition. And we've been in communication with them to make sure that they like the platform, kind of some of the issues we need to look for. And they really highlighted this transition plan as in taking the time to move the software over. As you guys know, Skyward is our student information system, and so it holds all of our student data. And so we're really picky when it comes to that. And so I've been working with Samantha, who is the data specialist who works specifically in Skyward. And I wanted to make sure that she approved of this transition plan as basically that's her world. That's all she does. And she's excited for it, for two big components that she's really excited about. One I already touched about is being able to customize the end user experience. What that means is as a head secretary, you'll be able to look at and have a screen that's personalized to you, meaning reports that you need to run on a daily basis, on a weekly basis. You'll have quick access to those without having to go through a lot of multiple screens to get to there. And so that's what she's looking forward, because from a district level, we'll be able to push those out to our end users instead of having each user customize that home screen. We'll be able to actually create it for them and send it out to them. The second component that we're looking forward to in that is their PD platform. We'll be able to actually track their progress to make sure that they understand this new system and also that we can have some sort of standard with every building on the way that they interact with Skyward. And so those are the two big components that we're looking forward to as far as end user. From the IT side, from the backend side, we're looking forward to some of the more flexibility that they'll have with other products that we use within the district, meaning that they'll be, we'll be able to integrate with other systems easier. And so that's the component that we're really looking forward to. So what you see here is their transition plan. What that'll look like is the first year, we'll look at cleaning our data, making sure that it's ready to transition over to Cumative. And there's a series of goals that we have to reach with their project manager before we can transition to the second stage of that. The second stage would be the second semester, we'd be looking at going live on the backend, meaning that our, our IT department will be able to have full access with Cumative. And we'd be in the process of creating those custom reports that we're currently using, creating connections with all the other applications that we use in the district, and then basically training our staff first. And then towards the end of that second semester, we'd be looking at training our office staff through that PD platform that they have. And then we would go on a live date hopefully during the summer. And so we feel like a year is an adequate time to slowly move into that, not rush anybody, make sure that we have adequate time that if any concerns come up as far as like how to use the platform, we'll be able to communicate that out perfectly. And then the other thing that you see on here is the amount of years that we're transitioning over. So you'll see that we are transitioning or moving over, migrating an additional nine years of student data. And so that means that, I guess a good example that I can give is the previous platform that we used, if you guys remember, was Sassy. And when we transitioned from Sassy to Skyward, we couldn't move that data over to the new platform, which meant that now if X student graduated at X time, we have to go to this platform to be able to get their records. If they are in the newer system, we, we have the ability to use that. We didn't want that experience. So what we did was we said, hey, we want all the years that are, we've been using Skyward to transition over. And so that's why you see an additional cost there. That's where those additional nine years of student information so that we can have it all on one platform. So do you guys have any questions?
I make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Tammy and a second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Six zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Victor. Okay, next up is the CrowdStrike endpoint security. Mr. Duell.
This is Ted. Good evening. What I have for your consideration this evening is, as you mentioned, this is a, it's endpoint protection. So it's, we talk about endpoint protection, endpoints, computers, printers, you know, that. But for this, we're focused on computers. And endpoint protection, it's, it does a lot more than just virus protection. So we're all familiar with virus scanners, virus protection, all that. The, in this day and age, that's just, it's not enough because with virus scanners, those are dependent on a database of known viruses. And it can take these companies months to discover new viruses and update their programs to know how to detect it, mitigate it, and all that. Modern day endpoint protection, like the CrowdStrike, it has kind of the opposite approach. It knows what is normal behavior and anything that doesn't match that, then it investigates. They, they know what common actions or activities are seen with, within the computer. And I'm talking like what the processors process, the code that the processor process, and, and what's present in the system memory. And it knows what common processes and actions are associated with the beginnings of ransomware, phishing attacks, probably a whole, whole list of keyloggers and things that are very malicious. And so it's really kind of maybe our, our last level of protection. So our, it's, the bad actors are finding ways to get through firewalls and mail filters and web filters and things like that. So when they get past that, then a program like CrowdStrike, there's many other programs out there, but programs like this will detect those things and they can cut them off immediately. So with the virus scanners, there can be a delay in, in, in infection and the detection. I mean, just today, we had a handful of alerts of desktop computers that had a, it was Adware, which by itself is not malicious, but it can lead to some bad things. And those were detected and mitigated. And then we did a little digging, and those were installed months ago. So there's a delay between when you can get these things and by the time they're detected. So the modern day stuff, it can detect stuff right away. Our new cybersecurity person, he has a test. He took a laptop, an older student laptop, and put the CrowdStrike program on it, used a hotspot so that it was not on our network. And there's actually websites you can go to, and you can download really bad viruses just to test stuff. And he downloaded some pretty nasty stuff, bad viruses, ransomware type viruses and things. And they come in a zip file, so you unzip them to install it. And as soon as it installed, it caught it and, and deleted it. So it was just a really good, he did that with several of these viruses. So it was a good test. We've did a lot of research on it. We were able to trial it for a while. We're, we still have it going, and we can, if approved, we can get licensed and just keep using what we already have set up. We did that with some other endpoint protection programs. We liked, the CrowdStrike was the best fit. We also visited with the IT director for the county. They use that. He had nothing but high praise for not just the program itself, but for the support that, that he gets from CrowdStrike. So this is a highly, it's becoming industry standard, highly recommended. Because we've been using kind of some free stuff from Microsoft that, like I mentioned, stuff that was found the day. There's a bit of a delay. It, it's good for, it's in, it's intention, but it's just not enough. And we do have another program that does some of this stuff as well that we use on our, called Trend Micro. We use it on our servers and some of the computers in the tech office, some more, more vulnerable computers. And we evaluated that. It just, we didn't think that was a good fit. And their, their console, their management console is just confusing, confusing. And there's just too many options, and it just doesn't flow well. And so the CrowdStrike was what we ended up with, and we thought it was the best fit. The, we would be purchasing that from Corrective Solutions. They have state contract, so we didn't have to go to bid anybody else. And for a one, one-year contract is the $47,781. That would be renewable year after year. So, and in their, you notice on their first page, they, they put a statement there that they wouldn't increase their renewal by more than 3%. And that's most places we're seeing, they were five, 10, 15. So, so they were able to, we, we asked for that, and they put that in. So that made us feel a little better about, about them. So anyway, that's the proposal for the CrowdStrike. And we would install, it'd be a small agent or a program that going on all the computers to do the monitoring. And it's, it doesn't really take up a lot of resources. One of the other ones we evaluated took up more resources and really slowed some computers down. But this one wasn't really that noticeable. So.
That's good.
Anyway, any questions?
Just, I just appreciate you being, you're comfortable with their support system?
Yes.
That you are going to get the support you need.
Yes, it's just even in the time that we've spent evaluating it, and we've actually set us up the console and installed on a few computers to test it out. They've been really good about working with us and.
Good.
Answering questions. And again, the IT director at the county had nothing but high praise for their support. So.
Good deal.
Anyway.
Thank you. I'll make a motion. We approve the purchase of the CrowdStrike endpoint security system as presented.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Six zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. All right, Hammer, you're up.
Good evening, board members. I just have two items for you tonight. The first, something we do every year this time of year, and that's just to buy in a year's worth of supplies for our custodial supplies, our paper products, trash bags. We put those in the warehouse that we have. So there's a fairly in-depth itemized list that's a couple pages long, but the grand total of that is 258,674.06. And again, it's, it will charge that to our maintenance supplies like we do every year.
A second. We've got a motion by Jamie and a second by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Six zero.
Next on the list, in June, you approved the, the idea of continuing on. Next on the list, in June, you approved the, the idea of continuing on with a, a three-year renewal of replacing various musical instruments. So you approved that budget approach and this is the first year. So, so now he went out, he's, he decided what musical instruments he needed. We got bids for him and you can see the itemized list there, broken out between percussion, percussion strings and wind instruments for a total of fifty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-three-ninety-nine. Again, this is something that we've been doing every year.
Okay. We've got a motion by Ryan, second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hammer. Human Resources, we've got Tara on her way.
I'm going for no tech issues tonight. Good evening, everyone. Tonight I bring before you two items that I'm bringing for your consideration and hopefully to approve this evening. The first one of those would be for the approval of the reclassification of the co-IT directors. As we have moved through, we have done a couple of different analyses on the Information Technology Department to evaluate the needs as they continue to evolve over time. And we have, with the, the current structure we have with the two IT, co-IT directors, it has served its purpose to date. But as we've gone through some of these analyses and their needs have evolved, in particular in areas like their infrastructure, cyber security and their instructional tech needs, we have identified that we need a restructured leadership approach. And so that's why we bring this to you this evening. Our request is that instead of having the two co-IT director positions, that those would now be reclassified. The first one would be Victor's position, which would now be titled the Executive Director of Information Technology. And the second, which would be Todd's position, would now be reclassified to the Information Security Analyst position. We believe that this will help meet their needs better and identify a more structured way of, of running the department as a whole. Financial considerations, so to adjust the Executive Director of Information Technology would result in an increase of approximately thirty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars due to the increased responsibilities and the executive level scope of the position. And then the reclassification of the second position to the Information Security Analyst would result in no financial change at this time. So I would be happy to answer any questions anybody may have on that.
Okay, I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second, and I do appreciate how our IT department has worked together.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate the, the cooperation and I think this is a necessary step for the continuation of it. I'll second.
Yep, so we have a motion by Tammy and a second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero.
Thank you. So now if you will skip down to item four for the evening, the second item that I bring to you for your approval is the approval of the Wage and Salary Administration Policy. So I believe that you have all seen this in the past before and have an idea of what it is. Essentially, now that we have approved the salary schedule that came before you last time, this is really the next step. We've never, well, we've had a general consensus on how we come to how positions are paid and how we determine that level. We've never had a systematic approach that's been board-approved that we can confer to on how some of these decisions to be, could be made. So essentially, this policy outlines things like how a job is analyzed and the compensable factors that go into determining how a position is scored and what salary range it should fall under. It helps us with the salary structure, annual increases, pay scale maintenance, differentials, how we handle promotions and demotions. So in the event that we have one of those, this kind of has a system for what the minimum impact should be if somebody is promoted or demoted versus the max, especially if we're dealing with somebody that may be jumping multiple positions at once during a promotion to help us work those guidelines so that we make sure that we're, we're staying transparent and consistent. This has been looked over by the Arnold Group and Hammer and Jason and myself have worked on continuing to update this to make sure that we feel comfortable with the parameters that we are requesting be approved, that we can work under from this point going forward. And of course, there's no financial impact associated with the adoption of this policy language. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
We've seen it a few times. Yeah. Yeah, I'll move it. Okay. I'll second. We've got a motion by Ryan and a second by Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Did you, did you vote, Tracy?
I did, I said aye.
Okay, all right, six, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. All right, you're up, Dr. Dirksen.
Thank you very much, Madam President. First item that I have for the board tonight is approval of KASB Board Policy Update. First reading was presented at the last meeting. Nothing has changed. We're approving two new policies and twelve revisions, the lion's share of which came from the legislative session, so it's almost a requirement. So I'm recommending approval tonight so that can get put into the books and implemented as needs to be. So with permission from the board, I'd like approval of the recommended board policy updates from KASB. I'll make that motion.
Good.
Second.
Motion by Jeff and a second by Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero.
Item two is for approval for next year's Administrator Exempt Salary Increase. Their new contract begins July one. We are looking at, we, we believe very manageably, three-point-five percent is a fair raise. I think my phone is saying there's a weather alert in this area, I apologize for that. And three-point-five percent is what we're asking for. It's estimated that that is a cost to the district of approximately two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand. And it is in line with what, what we have done similarly in the past. I would ask you to approve this so that HR and payroll can start work on the contracts for next year that you've already approved.
I make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Tammy and a second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero.
My last item tonight is the superintendent's roundup. This one happens to be the final roundup. And that day has finally come, I've looked forward to it, and yet at the same time, here it is. And so I have some very deep heartfelt feelings and it's a pleasure for me to share with you tonight. First of all, let's take a quick scan of recent events. If you have a chance to drive down Central or drive by two or three of our grade schools, we're feeding meals to students starting at about eleven o'clock. It's an unbelievable sight to see the kids and the joy on their faces and walking usually with their mother, maybe a big sister. It's just a, an amazing service that we're providing. And, and it's easy to see how much it is appreciated when you see them and, and how helpful we are being. So kudos to our workers that provide those meals four days a week and they load up on the weekends so they can have extra, or on Thursday, so they can last through the weekend. So that's a great thing. Saturday, we were the host for the whole state of Kansas for the Shrine Bowl, the fifty-second Shrine Bowl. What a spectacular event, minus fifty-five mile an hour winds. But the two parking lots and every street within four blocks of the stadium were full. The crowd was amazed. I, I got the biggest kick out of those that were here in two thousand and nineteen because we have had the pleasure of hosting the Shrine Bowl twice. And those that were here in nineteen were just taken back by the improvements that have been made in twenty-five. And I bet money, even though Emporia has the contract for the next three years, I'll bet somewhere in the next six years, Dodge City is back in the running. And it's a direct result of how amazed they were at the facilities that we were able to provide and, and, and let them be a part of. Turned out to be a, a great event. We also have other students competing in other events and I see Johnny Dunlap is in the crowd and we had several high schoolers compete at the National Forensics Tournament. Three, how, how many did we have?
Five.
Five, okay. We had five compete and did, did we have any results to brag about tonight?
We do. Two Dodge City High School students, Emily Clinkey and Ariana Salis, both broke, meaning they
Yes.
were eliminated rounds. That cut was originally four-hundred-and-fifty-five competitor, four-hundred-and-fifty-four competitors down to a hundred-and-twenty competitors.
Nice.
Then it progressed beyond that, but it's still exciting for them to make it to eliminate rounds.
Absolutely, Johnny. And that was in Des Moines, Iowa, and it was a national event and it was a great event. We didn't make much fanfare of it, but there was a scare that occurred during the time that they were going on. There was somebody created a little bit of panic, but that was handled well and it, it really, it didn't amount to any credible event, but it did cause chaos and Johnny was quick to get ahold of the administrators back here and let us know everything was okay. So we appreciated that, but, and I think all the families were notified and that's as far as it needed to go. But I just wanted you to know, we have students competing nationally and, and that, that's a great thing. So, so those are all good things that are going on. And kind of in a final wrap-up, this is where I want to leave things. As I've already reported, facility-wise, we're in excellent shape. The project on the west side of the indoor arena is going well for the weight room and Bowlin Alley Edition, we're very pleased with the progress that is being made in spite of the weather that's kind of delayed it a little bit, but they're catching up and on schedule as far as they're concerned. Enrollment is similarly a little behind where we like to be at this time of the year. Kindergarten, I just checked today, we're at four-hundred-and-ten. Usually we're about four-fifty at this point. With the rest of the summer to go, we're ramping up for online enrollment and onsite enrollment and that is coming up very soon. Since this is my last one, I want to report that financially, with audits complete and wrapping up the year-end totals, we're in very sound position for a district. And that's something to be grateful for, not every school district can say that. And so we are solid and sound. As far as openings go, we currently have two administrator, twenty certified, not counting long-term subs, and twenty-six classified. That's very similar to where we've been in the past at about this time and we're grateful for that. And I know HR works very hard to keep filling those slots and we still have a couple of months to go. So wish them the best on that. In conclusion, I want to say a few more things. Number one, I want to say, wow, eight years sure goes by fast. It just seems like yesterday when I was excited and had a little bit of brown in my hair. I'd also like to start with an apology because certainly I'm not perfect, never pretended to be perfect, but I'm sure there were things I could have done better. And I tried my best, I gave it everything and, and you accepted me for who I am. First thing I did wrong is I told you ten years and I've only stayed eight. But there comes a point in life when leadership is very fluid. And I think there's a responsibility of leaders that all have to look at where the district is. And as I just reported to you, we're in very good shape. So that's really a good time to step over and let somebody else take it because there are new ideas, there are new things that can happen and, and I look forward to them. I encourage them, if you will. I do want to say that I believe that Dodge City, the school board and the superintendent was a good fit. And I believe that eight years, that fit worked very nicely. And that's one thing I'll always appreciate is that the town accepted me, the school district accepted me, I accepted all of it. And that fit is what made it so successful and, and that meant the world to me. My first thanks goes to the Board of Education, five of which, with Tracy on the phone, were here when you hired me and you're still here. Jamie joined us that first semester that I started. So six of you have been with me for most of those eight years, all the way through. So that continuity is not seen in every school district and I think that's helped be successful with what the district has accomplished. So I thank you for that. I want to thank the cabinet because almost every position on the cabinet, I had a hand in putting in that place and we were a heck of a good team. We did a heck of a lot of good things and, and I'll forever be grateful for my cabinet members. One thing about my leadership style is I like to let leaders lead and then I like to be as supportive and helpful as I can be. And, and they took it and ran with it and did, did an outstanding job. If I was to point out some things that I'm very proud of, one of the things that sometimes gets overlooked is the climate and the culture. And I've always made an emphasis on what the climate is and what the culture is. And I truly care about each and every person in our district, from the students that bright beginnings to the custodian that's in the building that no one goes to, but yet they keep it clean. I care about all of those. And I'm also proud, when you walk through the Heritage Hall upstairs, that I have the third longest tenure of all those pictures of those old stuffies that are up there. And now I'm one of them. They already got me on the wall, so nothing like telling you to move out the door a week early. But, but only Tulsa and Cunningham have a longer tenure than my eight years and so I am very proud of that. So I want you to know, and I've said it before, it's the best job I ever had and it always will be. I certainly wish nothing but the best for the district ahead. I thank you again, each board member. And Jason, I wish you the most success that is possible as we move onward.
Thank you.
So that's my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for the nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, he's a lot more eloquent than I am, so. Thank you again for your eight years. Going on, we have Board of Education, Member District Responsibilities. Anything on parking rights, Ryan?
No, no.
Bright beginnings, hit start teaming, not till September?
Yep.
Special ad, Jeff?
Well, staffing is great. We do have openings at the high school in Comanche. And that, other than that, we're fully staffed and ready to go.
Okay. Legislative, is there anything, Dr. Dirksen, that we need to, besides what we've already?
Nothing that has an order to be discussed.
Okay. Nothing on capital outlay? Calendar committee will probably start back up in the fall. We do have Jared to, to look at bills before the July board meeting. Upcoming announcements, July seventh, the USD four-four-three online enrollment begins. July fourteenth will be our Board of Education meeting for, at six o'clock here in the boardroom. That is our organizational meeting for the beginning of the next school year. So if everyone can make an effort to be here, we will not have a second board meeting in July, just due to a lot of people being out on vacation and so forth. We do have two executive sessions this evening. As we discussed before we approved the agenda, we're going to flip-flop those. So the first one will be executive session as authorized by Kansas Law seventy-five-dash-four-three-one-nine for a matter protected by attorney-client privilege and for discussion of negotiations. We need about fifteen minutes for that one. It will be the board with Dr. Dirksen, Clayton Curbs, Jason Scheck, Hammer Russell and Patrick Crowdes will join us as well. And then we will have us, we'll come back into open session and then we will go back in for another fifteen minutes for discussion of matters regarding non-elected personnel. So we need a motion to, for the first executive session. Oh, on that second one, we need Dr. Dirksen, Jason Scheck, Clayton and Patrick, not Patrick, no, just, okay.
Do we need fifteen for the personnel? Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for the first executive session.
Okay. A second. We've got a motion by Jamie and a second by Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero.
Can I hear ten? Give me ten.
[laughing].